Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Clary, do we have a director's report, please?
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the planning commissioners have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Moving along, upcoming meetings and activities. Next Tuesday evening, we have the Board of Historic and Architectural Review Meeting at 6:30. The Board of Zoning Appeals has been canceled. Monday, the 24th, at 3:00 p.m., Town Council Committee Meetings will be held. Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30, we have a joint Town Council and Planning Commission Work Session. Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:30, we have Town Council Meeting. And Tuesday, March 11th, is our next Planning Commission Meeting, also at 6:30. Next, we have public comments. Public is invited to speak to the Planning Commission on any matters except scheduled public hearings. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Any required responses from the town will be provided in writing following the meeting. Ms. Clary, do we have any sign-ups? No sign-ups. Anybody who had a sudden urge to come up and say anything, now's your big moment. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Next up, we have Planning Commission Report, uh, Comments, sorry.
Yeah, I have one comment. From last month, when we did the text amendment for the downtown neighborhood residential, kind of missed the point of that discussion. And I emailed Tammy and Mark and asked the question, why are we doing a text amendment? An adjustment when every other ordinance has a way to increase density within the ordinance. And so Tammy brought to my attention that the downtown neighborhood residential did not have a mechanism to allow for an increased density. So then I thought, well, where did the number come from? Where did five units per acre come from? Because a lot of these just seem arbitrary. Because when you look at the square footage of the lots downtown, if you have a single-family home in a downtown neighborhood residential, it's 6,000 square feet for a lot. When you divide that into an acre, you get 7.3 units per acre. And if you have attached residential homes, they allow for 4,000 square feet per lot, which gives you a density of 10.9 units per acre. So my whole point on all of these ordinances is, and what I want to talk about on the 25th, when we get with the Town Council and the direction of all of this, is this all just seems very random. And there's no rhyme or reason for why our ordinances are at what densities they're at. And I guess the question comes back is, when were our ordinances written? How long ago? Why were they written the way they were written? But why do we have a lot size that allows for 7.3 and 11 acres, units per acre, but we have, we limit it at five? It just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense the way a lot of this is done. And so I'm sorry I missed it last month, but I just wanted to bring out this point, that some of this just doesn't make any sense. And when we have our work session on the 25th, I've got a list of stuff I think we've got to work through to see what makes sense. You know, because a lot of these ordinances seem like they're going to be interpreted to the letter of the law, when this is, just seems to be very random numbers that somebody just pulled out of a hat and said, this seems right, but it doesn't seem to make logical sense based on the way the ordinances are written. So as we prepare for that meeting in the next couple of weeks, I'd encourage us to look at that and see if we can find inconsistencies with this. But this is one of those things that just had a big inconsistency with me.
Thank you, Dr. Phil.
You know, I've had some thoughts on that as well. And maybe somebody's been on the commission long enough to know when that number came about, or maybe the attorney is familiar with it. But I would wager that it's not random, that there was some wise Board of Commissioners much like this that made those decisions. And a town planner that weighed in heavily on those decisions, much like Ms. Clary does on all the decisions that she makes. So one of the things, and I was also going to share it next week, I'll be, I'll be joining you remotely next week. But when I went to the Planning Commissioners Training, and Ms. Smith was there as well, and one of the things that I think I learned there, and I know some or all of you have attended that as well, is that we could be doing it a little wrong compared to other localities. I discussed how we have developments with many special use permit requests to challenge every part of our zoning. And one, one Planning Commissioner said he only seen two or three special use permits in his entire tenure on the Planning Commission. So other folks are doing it a little wrong. I mean, I would even argue that if you, you know, if we had a problem with that number of five per acre, rather than zoning a 1.2 acre space differently, we should look collectively at the entire historic district and see if, you know, if you support 10 units per acre throughout the historic district, then perhaps it should be proposed to change that to 10 units per acre. I don't, I don't think I would support that. Rather than spot zoning small plots of land, or individual developments, but changing complen, you know, comprehensively the zoning. So that was, that was something I picked up on in that training in Richmond. So just some food for thought. But, you know, I don't think the numbers, and I don't think the citizens are pushing for a large change or deviation from the limits that we have set now. A big question I got asked on the campaign trail was, how do you maintain small-town charm and still allow growth? And it was building good neighborhoods. And these good neighborhoods that we see around us and that we live in now aren't as dense as many of those that have been proposed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would venture an educated guess on this. The plans, Downtown Neighborhood Residential, you have to know, remember that those, that area was built long before the town adopted a planning commission, the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances. So that was, Downtown Neighborhood Residential, it was just built that way. So this is probably something that was just overlooked at the time. And there's been no major development brought up to put into that area ever since. And if I'm wrong, I mean, correct me, but the plan didn't come about until 1990, if I believe, if anybody knows. And Gray Street, that area, Downtown Neighborhood Residential, that was built out long before then. So that's just, I'm thinking that's just something that was overlooked when that ordinance was written.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Attorney, you have any idea about?
Well, I mean, this has evolved over a long time. Smithfield was founded in 1752, and it was, it's platted, the downtown was platted when there was no such thing as zoning. Nobody ever thought about it. And so over the years, zoning evolved, and the town adopted a modern zoning ordinance and imposed it on a town that was built in the 18th century. So it's very difficult to, that's why there's so much flexibility built into a lot of the zoning districts, because we've tried to, to recognize the fact that we've, we've done this. And so that's why there was lots and lots of flexibility with special use permits and the ability to change things. Because when you try to enforce something that's very inflexible over something that was created long before zoning was ever contemplated, it causes awful situations. You cannot, the law has changed in Virginia. It used to be that if things didn't work, you'd just go get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. You can't get a variance anymore. The standard that is, it's almost, it's very, very difficult to meet the threshold standards that would permit the Board of Zoning Appeals to give you a variance. Now, you can get yard exceptions, and we do that quite often, but variances are almost never granted because the law changed. Supreme Court came out 15, 20 years ago and said, you can't do what you've been doing. Board of Zoning Appeals can't just willy-nilly grant variances. And so it's a much different standard. And so taking all that into consideration, we had consultants who worked with the Planning Commission and the Town Council and came up with a zoning ordinance. And that's why it is what it is. You know, if you don't like it, you can scrap it and make another one. But it's, we've done that. We threw out the zoning ordinance that we had before because we didn't think that was flexible enough, and we adopted this one. So that's how it's evolved. But times evolve, things change. Forty years ago, everybody wanted a one-acre lot. That was the standard. And there are dozens of subdivisions all around the county and some in the town that have acre lots. People can't afford acre lots anymore. That's a subdivision that has one-acre lots in it would, because of land cost and infrastructure cost, would dictate that houses would sell far beyond the price that most people can afford. Forty years ago, it was the standard. It's not anymore. And density has become the thing that makes people, it permits people to build homes and afford them, because the land cost is less, but more importantly, the infrastructure is less, because you can serve more, more homes with the same amount of street and water and sewer infrastructure. So that's, the world has evolved, and zoning has evolved, and that's why things are the way they are. And that's why everybody, when, when you see applications, there's a lot of density in it. And you don't have to approve it, but that's why it's coming, is because they're trying to develop their subdivisions at a price point that people can afford. That's why there are different kinds of housing product now, attached residential, townhouses, condominiums, you name it. And they're all designed to create a product that people can afford, because developers in the business of selling houses, that's what they do. And, you know, we have a housing shortage in this country, and it's not being met. So there's going to be, and Smithfield's a nice place to be, and everybody wants to be here, and there's lots of people who want to build things here, and it's, you know, it's your job to decide whether what they're proposing is good or not, and whether you can support it. But that's how it's evolved. And maybe, maybe the planners in Richmond don't think what we're doing is the right way. The flip side of what we've done is you can, you can come up with a zoning ordinance that has very rigid parameters. This is what you can do in this, in this district. And you can say, we're not going to deviate that, from that at all, but if you make it so strict that nobody can afford to build in that district, you're not going to get anything. So that's why there was, our ordinance has lots of, the ability to apply for special use permits. And that was designed to give flexibility. If you decide you don't want any flexibility, you can start all over and do it a different way. But that's why it was done that way.
And I'm thinking, I'm thinking also that the way we adopt, or change our ordinances now, we look at other communities, other towns, see what they've done, and see if we can apply to what we're doing. And I would pretty much guess that that's what happened when the first ordinance was presented, that included the downtown neighborhood, historic district, residential, all of that. And it was just something, the density was probably something at that time that was just overlooked. I mean, after all, that area was already built out. Just a guess. But also, I have another question, a legal one. Attorney, ready? Recently, we've had several applications come back to revise proffers. And I want to look at that in reverse. After we approve an application or something, and reviewing, and when you look back and see if there's something that possibly has been a misstep or such, do the town have the ability to go back and ask for revision to proffers?
Yes.
It does.
If, if, but we can't take away rights that are vested in the developer. If there's something that has, that during the development process, both parties figure out that there's a problem, then you can go back and correct it. And that's what we've done in the past. Some people may say it's a good thing, and some people may say it's a bad thing, but the roundabout was an example. There was a reason to go back and revise that. And again, some people think that was a good idea, some people think it was not. But it was based on the circumstances and the recommendation from VDOT and the staff's recommendation. But things like that happen, and you can go back and correct those. But if, if you approve proffers for a developer, and then you decide a year later, well, I didn't like what we approved, the town doesn't have the right to go back and say, well, I gave you something I shouldn't have given you, I want to change it. Unilaterally, you can't do that, because property owners have vested rights. When you, when you approve something, you've given them a right, and you can't take it away, take it away without due process. You can take it away, but you're going to, you're going to, if it's done improperly and without very sound legal justification, they're going to sue you, and they're going to win. Because Virginia is a very strong property right state. The municipalities have a lot of power. You don't have to approve anything. For the next 10 years, you don't have to approve anything, if you don't want to. But that's not your job. I mean, your job is to plan for the future. But there's nothing that says you have to approve anything.
Thank you.
Other Planning Commission comments? Okay, moving on. Item number five is a special use permit, 803 South Church Street, Red Point Tap House LLC. John Ryan's applicant. Ms. Clary, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This application was tabled at the December 10th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting, after a tie vote. The staff report does outline the various applications that this project has gone through, always including that phasing plan that they would connect to town water by June 1st, 2022, and they would install the driveway improvements by June 1st, 2022. At the Tuesday, October 2nd, 2024 Town Council Meeting, the Town Council granted the S U P for a waiver of parking and loading requirements, allowing that gravel parking area and drive area, provided that the applicants return with an S U P request for the private structure connected to a private well. Town staff do recommend an unfavorable recommendation to Town Council for the private well connection, as it is in conflict with our design standards, Section 24 and Town Code, Section 8245.
Thank you. Thank you. Do the applicants wish to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tim Ryan, 11220 Shepherd Cove, Smithfield, Virginia. Without rehashing all the things, this is like the sixth time I've had to lay this case out before, but I would like to clarify a couple of things tonight, if I can. Two things in particular, and primarily focused on the rules that we're talking about here, because last time, when I, when I was in front of this group, it was clear that some in the group were unclear about what rules we were actually talking about and the reach of those rules. And second is about the application of those rules to both our business and other businesses in town, which is in keeping with some of what you all have been talking about. So first, what rules are in play? There are two of them. One, as Ms. Clary just pointed out, is 8245, which is in the town municipal code. And the second is Section 2-4 of the Town Design Standards for Water and Sewer. Is that correct, Ms. Clary? I got those right. Okay. So first, code 8245. And it's important, we read this and understand what it says, because there's a lot of things that it doesn't say. What 8245 says is it, quote, "Where a public water supply is available in the town, it shall be unlawful to connect a residential or commercial structure to a private well." Read that again. Where a public water supply is available in the town, it shall be unlawful to connect a residential or commercial structure to a private well. Was 803 South Church where a public water supply was available when the, when the well was connected in 1929? When was, when was 803 South Church annexed into the town?
Mr. Ryan, this is not a debate. Make your case.
I'm saying, it was, it was annexed into the town in 1965. So the point here is that the well was not an unlawful connection, it was not part of the town, and that the, what the rule says right here, it's unlawful to connect. It does not say that it's unlawful to be connected. We were connected before the town annexed. So this, this code 8245 doesn't even apply to us, and we don't need a special use permit because we're not asking to connect to private water as a commercial or a residential structure. And that would apply to the other buildings that are on that same well, or anybody else in town who was established, who was connected to a well prior to annexation. So that's the first, that's the first bit. The second is code, sorry, Design Standard 2-4. And Design Standard is not a law, it's not a municipal code, it's a Design Standard guideline, is I understand. Am I correct in that? I presume so. All right, so 2-4 says, quote, "All, all commercial sites shall have a two-inch water service line, all. If a smaller service is needed, the service line shall be reduced to the required size at the meter setter. The owner will only be required to pay the fee for the tap size required." Other important part, "In the event that a commercial property renovates their building," bad wording, "the water service line shall be upgraded to a two-inch, to two-inch." All commercial sites. I asked Ms. Clary to define what a commercial site was, what exactly constitutes a commercial site. And she basically said that the restaurant that I have, as well as the short-term rental that I have, are both commercial. But that's not the question. The question is, if we're saying all commercial sites, that means all businesses, by my read of that, if I do a quick Google search, it says that, you know, a commercial property is typically defined as any property used for business activities. Simple enough. That would include every business in the town of Smithfield, all. So that means that every business in the town of Smithfield must have, all, have a two-inch water service line. I asked, what, what does renovation mean? What, what, you know, so if, if they don't have it already, and you're saying that the threshold is they have to be renovated, or when they're renovated, that the, that means that they have to have a two-inch water line? Still no answer. There's nothing in the Town Code that I could find that says exactly what renovation is. So the question here is, is does, does, in this case, does the Town Design Standard overrule the, the 8245, where we're not, we're not connected to water? Does this mean that even if we're not connected to water, that we have to apply the two-inch water main rule, because all businesses have to? But I'm going to talk a second about the application of the rules real quickly, because it's haphazard. It seems to only apply to businesses that I happen to be involved with, or at least that's the way it feels. So we're zoned at 803 South Church HRC, okay? And we're a restaurant, that makes sense, okay? We're commercial, got it, all right? We don't have water hooked up, but you're saying that if we're commercial, we have to. We've got a residential structure that you said last time became commercial at 105 days of rental, and therefore had to have two-inch water main and connect to town water. Same problem that we have at 803 South Church. But this rule says that every business has to be hooked to a two-inch water line. So let's just do a quick review of those buildings that, you know, that just, that you drive by every day. How about the Hair Stop at 1113 South Church Street? They did a full renovation of the front of the building, it's the one right behind, it's the beauty salon, right behind Town Bank, right across from the two insurance buildings. Did a full renovation this summer. I didn't see any special use permit signs out there that said that they were asking for a waiver for a two-inch water line, or a gravel parking lot, or front yard parking, or, you know, front yard loading, which they have all of those, and we, as we do. The town didn't force them. How about the Smithfield Self Storage Building right next to it? Also a former residential building that has, is zoned HRC, same as we are, no special use permit. How about Bon Vivant, the little bitty wine and beer sale? Former residential building, front yard parking, et cetera, et cetera, no two-inch water line. How about Archer Jones Lawyer's Office? Former residential building, zoned HRC, has to have a two-inch water line. And that, I could go on and on. There's at least 14 different buildings just on South Church Street, and I can't even count them on Main Street and Smithfield, that are commercial, zone commercial, or commercial working out of former residential building, that would fall under these exact same rules if the two structures, and again, we're talking 803 South Church in this case. But these are the rules that you're trying to enforce on us at a $30,000 cost, when the question is, who needs, who needs a two-inch water service line? What's the, what's the reasoning behind that? So in anybody's research, did you happen to see how much water a two-inch water line would deliver? Well, I'll answer that question. It's 200 gallons a minute, 200 gallons a minute, 1,200 gallons an hour, okay? The town, the Town Code says, in the same section, 82, says that the maximum amount of water flow for a shower or a toilet in a residential setting is 2.5 gallons per minute. It's 1.6 for a commercial. So that'd be 80 toilets and sinks, or 80 toilets and showers running simultaneously would consume the amount of water that you could put through a two-inch water line. Now, what business in Smithfield would need that much water at one time? Now or ever? Especially if you're in a residential building, that's, that's never going to be anything more than a residential building. I could see it if you're a car wash, or a laundromat, et cetera. So my point in all this is, is that you have a bad rule, and I said that before. It's a rule that doesn't apply to us, and it doesn't apply to most, anybody else. But it seems that we're only, we're the only ones who are getting it applied to. So in conclusion, first, the first rule, the Town 8245, doesn't apply to us, because we're not asking to connect to public water, to, yeah, to public water, I mean, sorry, we're not asking to connect to a private well. We're already connected, and this rule doesn't say that it's against the law to be connected. The second is that design rules with a two-inch water main don't make sense for any business, almost, and that maybe we ought to change the rules so that they apply better to the businesses that they fit. With that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions for Mr. Ryan?
No, but I need to address this.
Okay.
Everything he just said may or may not be true, but it's not relevant, because they rezoned their property, or got a conditional use permit, and they, at the time they did that, they proffered that they would connect to public water. They were not connected to public water. And as a condition of the Planning Commission, the Town Council granting them the request that they asked for, for the development of that proffer, that property, they agreed to connect to public water. That's the only issue. The, the red herring here is that, is the two-inch connection. What, it doesn't matter, just the connection, the water's on the, the water main is on the other side of the highway, across Church Street. They have to, the connection that we're asking them to make is a two-inch connection into the water main. But the ordinance permits them to reduce it down to an equivalent size for a residential connection. They're not being asked to pay for a tap fee for a two-inch line. That's, that's a red herring. Everything he just said is not relevant to his situation. Now, you can still grant him an S U P. What he's, the Town Council suggested that maybe we will give you some relief if you file for a special use permit and ask that we be permitted to, they be permitted to maintain connection to the well. That's a, that's a discretionary situation. But it's contrary to what they promised that they would do. If you want to grant them the relief, that's fine. But everything he says about the design standards and the, the ordinance that we're saying is just, that's what's required. Water is available, it's across the street, all right? He needs to make connection because he promised that he would do so. If you want to give him relief from that, you can grant, recommend that the council grant him a special use permit. But all that noise about the standards and all that sort of thing has nothing to do with what you're, with what you're considering tonight. Nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick.
But that's what Ms. Clary said, that they, her disapproval was based upon. Those two rules was what, the town said they disapproved our special use permit application because of those two rules. And that's the reason why I'm addressing those two.
Well, that's, that's not, that's not the question before the council tonight, excuse me, the Planning Commission. The question is, he had a proffer, he promised to do it, the, he's asked for relief, you gave him relief on the, on the
On the timing.
Parking lot.
And the parking lot.
You gave him relief on the parking lot.
We extended the timeline.
That's right. Now you're asking, he's asking for relief on the water. You can grant him that relief, but it is a waiver from what he promised, he, the owners promised they would do with respect to that property. If you want to give him relief, that's fine. But it doesn't have anything to do, it's, it's, water is available, he promised to connect. Now he doesn't want to. It's expensive, we know that. Just as a history of this, they, they advised that the cost estimate they got was something in the neighborhood of about $75,000. The town staff took it upon itself to use our contractors, and we got it priced more in the neighborhood of $30-some thousand. Still very expensive, we acknowledge that, but it's a lot less than $70-some thousand. But this was granted five, almost five years ago, and the promise was to connect by 2022. And you can make all the arguments you want to, if you recognize that this is a hardship on small business, that's fine. But don't be confused by that, because that's not the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick. Miss Member, comments on this item?
I share, I have mixed emotions about this. I do want for us to be open for business, I would like to provide some relief to a small business. They've done a great job, it's a thriving business in our community, but their previous S U P was approved conditionally based on the things that they promised to do. And that's where I struggle, whether or not to grant them the request.
Ma'am, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
First off, does, does anyone know when water came down South Church Street? Perhaps, what year? Okay.
Yeah. Before I ever got here.
Okay. And then, water came down both sides, I think, because we have other homes and businesses connected on both sides of South Church Street, correct?
That was all, when they, when they built Lumall Road, they, they extended road down there. This is just a donut hole.
Well, that's kind of the point I'm getting at, is we have effectively a, a public water desert right there, surrounded by homes and businesses that are served by public water. So not knowing the history of it and why that occurred, it, it seems conflicting to me to not, you know, to uphold this standard that you promised, which, you know, I agree with the attorney, it's not, it's what you promised to do, not what you probably should have argued at the point, at the time, is what you argued tonight. But there, maybe there's some room for middle ground, I guess is what I'm getting at, you know, if there's a, an opportunity, and I don't see the special use permit and exactly exactly what the language of it is, but, um, it seems to me that maybe you could even in hindsight call it an error, that public water wasn't provided to this business or the homes that are on this well, yet every other home and business in that vicinity was. Um, so, a compromise could be, we'll grant you a special use permit to not connect to water until it's brought to your doorstep, like every other home and business it was. But I think, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the real cost is bringing it across the road, right?
Yeah, that's tr, that's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, we brought it across the road for Red Point subdivision, it got brought across the road for other neighborhoods, you know, it was brought into neighborhoods and businesses that didn't show up on its own, and businesses didn't bring it themselves. Um, so, I, you know, I think a, a compromise may be, and it may require some wording, Ms. Clary, but we'll grant you a special use permit until we bring the water, and then you will be required to connect.
That is not how we treat commercial developments. They are responsible for bringing the water to their site. Um, the water line does round, run down South Church Street, up Lumar and around, so those, uh, single-family residents that are on that well do have water right in front that they could connect to.
The town has brought water to their
Correct.
In nineteen seventy-eight.
Then why is it on the other side of the road?
We don't run double water lines down roads.
Just run a line down any street.
It's just bad luck. I can't help that it's on the other side of the road. But in twenty twenty, when he purchased the business, and he came before the pleading, the planning director, the planning director said, "In order to refurbish this building and do what you wish, you must bring it up to code, and therefore you must hook to town water," and the agreement was in it. And now we gave him a grace period, and they're getting out of the grace period and wish not to do that. And if the town director at the time had said, "You can't get your occupancy permit until you hook to town water," we wouldn't be sitting here today.
Agree.
I had to tap into town water when I built my building twenty years ago. I had to do it. I mean, everybody has to do it when you build a building. It's just part of it. Because this building is so old, and probably predates nineteen seventy-eight, it's been allowed to, to succeed as it, as it has until a substantial renovation has occurred. To his point, we, I tried to discuss this months ago about when are we gonna trigger that every renovation or any new things, when are we gonna trigger that they have to fully comply with everything, E C O guidelines, paved parking lots, the whole nine yards that are in there? Well, if you do a five thousand dollar resi, uh, renovation, is that gonna trigger you to do it? Or do you have to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation in order to say you're gonna trigger that you gotta be in full compliance? We don't have a guideline, at least to my knowledge, and that's something, again, I've gotten written down, that we need to discuss it the, on the twenty-fifth, because right now, it's, it, it's piecemeal. It is not a standard that we have, that when, when do we trigger that? When a business does make a renovation, when are we gonna make them fully comply? With everything that goes on? And, and, and right now, it's, it's not a standard.
The differential in the cost on the, a two-inch connection, it's just a two-inch connection in the water main. It's, and then it's the, the differential cost between a, uh, two-inch pipe and a five-eighths inch pipe, that's the only difference in the
It would be a one-inch, a one-inch service lateral.
A one-inch service lateral, okay. So, that's just the differential in the cost. The, the, the expense, the tap fees for a two-inch line are huge, they're very expensive. We don't make businesses pay tap fees, such as his business and, and the offices and the hair stop and all those, if they were, they were new connections to the town water system, we would not make them pay for a two-inch connection, uh, as far as the tap fee is concerned, because they don't need that, that volume of water. Um, the, the, the volume of water that they need is equivalent to, essentially to a residential connection, and they're paying a tap fee equivalent to a residential connection. But the, the agreement was, it's not so much the two-inch connection to, it's connecting to public water. That's the, that's the real issue right there. It's connecting to public water because they're a business. There are four other homes, is it four, or?
Six.
Six.
Six, there's six homes over there on that well that are gonna stay on the well, because we, because water is not available to them, and they don't, and we, the town's not gonna pay to extend it. Um, to your point, uh, Mr.
Isn't it just as available to them as it is to Red Point Tap House?
But it's, it's, no, it's not, because it, the difference is, they agreed to connect to water. They agreed
I got that, but when you say available
It, no, it's, there's not a, there's not a water line over there. They would have to be, because it's, the, there's not a convenient way for them, the residential, um, customers to connect, and they're grandfathered on their will. They would still be grandfathered on the will, but for the fact that they chose to do what they did, and as part of the, the, um, wholesale rehabilitation, renovation, you don't like renovation, whatever the words you wanna use, they changed the character of that property significantly, and as part of that, they agreed to do this. Now, whether you think that's onerous or not, that's, that's a decision to make, but you need to understand why. The, the town did not pay to put all these water lines in. The developer pays to put the, they built the streets, they put the sewer in, they put the water lines in. The town doesn't write a big check to do that. We don't ever do that.
I totally understand.
Developers do that, and that's why the town is not paying to extend the water on the east side of, side of Church Street.
If, if I could make another point here, please? The, uh, what we agreed to, first off, you know, I know a lot more about these rules than, than I did in two thousand, two thousand, when this started. We've had to go through ten special use permits for all sorts of ridiculous things, like front yard parking, where there's never been a front yard, a front yard setback, when the highways, the, the pavement in front of the building is, was the highway, highway ten, et cetera, et cetera. So, there was a lot of confusion, and we were trying to do a lot of other things besides get passed special u, use permits in two thousand. We even had people come counting the number of bil, of plants on the side of our building and kicking back our, our requests for, um, for zoning application as a result of, we had five plans instead of six, and I'm not lying. But here's what are, the, the, what we asked relief from in two thousand, Ms. Clary, correct me if I'm wrong, is section eighty-two forty-five, the, the use of public, we, we asked to have a, a relief from that. I just read you what it says. It does not say that we have to hook to town water. Again, I didn't know that then, but I'm reading the rule now. As amended November, uh, fourteenth of twenty twenty-four, it says, "When the water supply's available, you have to hook to it." Well, the water supply wasn't available when that building got hooked to a private well, and therefore we weren't out of compliance with that then, we weren't, we're not out of compliance with it now. And so, we were asking for relief from something that didn't apply to us to begin with, and I didn't know that. And the second is the, the two-inch water line thing, if you're gonna force us, if we don't have to have water hooked up, but if you're gonna force us to have to do a two-inch water line, for whatever reason, then every other business in town has to have a two-inch water line. Because Ms. Clary's saying that I've got a short-term rental that's also not hooked to town water, but that has to have a two-inch water line because it becomes a motel at a hundred and five days of rental. So, if it's a commercial site and it applies to those two properties, then it applies to every other business in town. What I'm saying is, forget the, forget the connect to town water bit, but if nothing else, your, your design standards don't make a lot of sense for most people, and that, that at least, you should come away from, uh, from this with, uh, some changes, at least a recommendation to change, and make those rules at least apply, even if you're gonna jam them down our throat for whatever reason, so, thank you.
I would just like to comment, uh,
Mr. Brown.
To, uh, Councilman, uh, Darren, this, this idea about, um, the water main, where it reaches, pretty much in any development, any town, including South Church Street, there is only one main water line that runs down a street. You can check with the, uh, town engineer, but there's only one main line running down the street anywhere. It's cause prohibited to run two lines on each side, so they run one main one. They just happen to be on opposite side of where the main is, but that's the case in pretty much any development that we're doing. You go down Mallory Point, uh, Battery Park for Mallory Point, they're only putting one main water line, they're improving, they're, they're upgrading that main water line. It crosses the street at some point, but there's only one main water line that runs all the way down Battery Park Road, and then they will branch off when they go into the development itself. And in the development itself on each road, there will only be another one main line, on one side of the road, maybe in the middle, but there's never, well, I won't say never, but there's hardly ever a case where there will be two main water lines running down any one road.
Just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, completely understand that. I'll, I'll give you another example, my childhood home in, in similar town, Monterey, North Carolina, and, uh, I lived outside the town limits, they brought town water down my street, and I was on the other side of the road, and they said, "You just have to pay the connection fee. You have to put in the connection, you're required to put in the connection fee, but you're not required to connect to it." Um, but we weren't required to pay the fee to get it underneath the street, neither was every other home on the other side of the street. So, I, you know, I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, when this was done, so developer did it, that's great, but the, the town could have had some foresight to say, "Well, there's some existing homes over there, you know, perhaps we could have ran a water line over to them while all that was taking place." I mean, those homes must have predated the town water.
And I would say, that's probably my guess, because typically what you just said is true. When a town will extend the water line or water service, there's typically a vote by whatever governing body to say, "Once it's extended, you're required to tap," and more than likely, what happened whenever this came in, they were required to tap, they paid their tap fee, they just never connected, because they had the well and everybody was already connected, so. And I don't know, because like I said, you guys have been there since seventy-eight, I haven't been here since seventy-eight, but typically, a town will require the tap fee and the connection to city water if available, and if you elect not to connect because you've got a well or whatever other service, you still pay your tap fee and the service for it coming in, but.
Uh, Nick Hess, two twenty-three South Church Street, Smithfield, Virginia. Uh, so, to speak to that, um, and I think Mr. Riddick can entice, in nineteen sixty-six, those six homes were annexed, two used that well. So, town, when it went down, like Mr. Cutler said, you know, it, that was a desert, they did not. It does go down the next, you pass us and go down, is that Jordan?
Yeah.
It goes down Jordan, hits the houses on the left, and then supplies Moonfield. Uh, the whole reason for the proffer, and that's what we're here for, we're here for talk about laws and all that, but I appreciate, uh, Mr. Ryan doing all that research, we did proffer for it. We proffered for it for the, for the following reason. Uh, this business has been commercial since nineteen twenty-nine, and twenty twenty-five, we're almost a hundred years old, and now we wanna connect to city water. We have a water source, and we're asking to stay with that water source. The reason why we were forced to connect to that water source in the proffer is because that commercial business closed for over thirty days. So, if a commercial business closed for over thirty days, per Mr.
Settle.
Settle, then we had to connect to it. That's the reason went into the proffer. Uh, if I would have done better research six years ago when we acquired that building, I would have known these things. So, what we're asking for is relief from having to do this, and as you said, Mr. Cutler, if they bring water over to supply those six homes, we all would pay the tap fee and go on it, one hundred percent. But paying that fee for thirty thousand of real costs just does not make sense for a small business that provides a lot of tax revenue to the town and provides a lot of, well, it's a great retro for the town, and it's the longest-standing business that's ever been in that building, so let's not take that away. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Other Planning Commission comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Um, excuse me, if I'm swaying, but let's discuss, not just comment. Um, it is true that you all agreed to tap in, and the reason you agreed is because you wanted to, you wanted to, real bad, and we're glad that you're here. And it does not do me any good to say, "I want you to close down." I don't, I don't. I just want you to do what you said you would do. Everything else was, should have been, could have been, maybe it will be, but it's not right now. That's all I want you to do, is I want you to do what you said you was gonna do, what you agreed to do after the first time that it was extended. So, therefore, whenever you do have a motion, my vote will be no. I believe that you need to, I don't vote in favor of special use permit at this time. Because it'll just come up.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Chair, Chair Hilligas, probably.
Yes, Ms. Brown.
The thing I wanna mention here is, we just updated our comprehensive plan, and particularly for South Church Street, the way we envision, envisioned that street to develop over the next few years, I would anticipate there's gonna be a lot of business changes on that street. We're talking about making it walkability. Businesses that come in the future, they'll be allowed to build closer to the road because of the comprehensive plan that we developed. The houses he mentioned, how much longer are they gonna be there? They may not. Some businesses that come in, wanna raise them, build something bigger, better on that South Church Street, they will, they would do that, they can do that. But then if you set the precedent here of not requiring the connection, what kind of turmoil are you gonna create going forward into the future? That's my concern, that's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any further discussion?
That's a fine point, but you could also argue that the precedent has already been set. Other businesses have not been forced to connect.
But that goes back to
That's, that's, that's not true.
Everybody's
Yes.
That's just not true.
Yes, it goes back to what happened with this one. This one updated, this one renovated, that's what made it eligible to connect. But when, when the others come, and they do the major renovation, they will have the same requirement.
So, we have another, another, um, place coming up here with, um, what could be perceived as a major renovation, to redo a driveway, redo a decking, redo some of the outside of their
That doesn't qualify.
They're already connected to water, that's not the issue.
Yeah.
They're already connected to town water. That, the issue is connection to town water.
I understand the issue.
It's not the two, it's not the two-inch.
Thank you. I understand the issue.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, that's not, we're not talking about, um, if you're gonna talk about that, that next, the next, um, application is apples and oranges.
Well, so is a hypothetical. I mean, so I think my case or point is just as valid.
I think you're missing the point. They made a promise, and now they don't wanna hold to the promise. That's all we're talking about.
Yeah, and I ma, I made that statement as well already, that they made a, a poor business decision at that time.
Okay, further discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend denial of the S U P.
Second.
Ms. Clary, would you take the vote, please? Mr. Brian?
Let's be clear. A denial, my response should be yes, correct?
If you agree that it should be denied.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Cutler?
No.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
No.
Okay. Sorry, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next item on the agenda is, um, the elevations from Mallory Point. Ms. Clary, you have a staff report?
Yes, uh, per the Planning Commission's request, we included the proffer conditions, which discusses the slab, um, and the, uh, heated living space of the areas. We also included the first set, which would be the Eastwood elevations, and then the second set, which are the Stanley Martin elevations.
Any discussion on that item? Everybody waded through all this?
Actually, I did, I did go through, and what you wanted, Ms. Clary, was which ones that we liked versus which ones we didn't like.
That is correct. That is correct. These were on the agenda last month, and we provided the conceptual elevations, and we wanted Planning Commission's input on what complied with the conceptual elevations that were submitted.
It shouldn't be your, you shouldn't catch it in terms of whether you like them or don't like them, whether they're, whether you deem them to be appropriate based on their submitting as representative of what was proffered.
Ms. Clary, do you have a deadline for those comments?
I do not. I believe that there are applicants available, if the Planning Commission would like to have a discussion.
Would you all like to hear from the applicants this evening? Would the applicants like to speak this evening?
Spinn Custis, I'm the Division President for Eastwood Homes. My address is 4005 Kensington Avenue in Richmond, Virginia. Ms. Clary gave us the opportunity to present these elevations to you. The zoning case basically stated the elevations that would be submitted would be in substantial conformance with what was rezoned. We feel, or we're confident that those elevations we provided are in substantial conformance with what was presented at the rezoning. So, I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Is there a number of different designs that will be on a street? For instance, no, there won't be three in a row of the same, or every fifth one would be, it won't repeat for another fifth one, or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. So, the ARB, who actually oversees our elevations, the developer, when we submit them, does have that as a requirement for us, that we don't repeat elevations, and we don't have the same elevation across the street, next to, or diagonal. Yes, ma'am. That was not a proffer condition, no, ma'am. But the ARB will take additional steps to make sure the quality of the neighborhood is sustained.
So, as, when you build these, when you choose the homes to build, you build them before you sell them?
No, sir. We actually sell them and let the customers choose the elevation.
And that's where I get lost. How can you ensure that the same fact, the elevations aren't side by side, if the customers want the same thing?
We keep track of it. We make sure, we basically say to a customer, "You can't build this elevation because your neighbor has this elevation."
You do that?
So, they have to pick a different lot?
I'm sorry?
They would have to pick a different lot if they wanted that elevation?
Yes, sir. And these, that's a rule that we've, we've been building houses for many years in Richmond and Hampton Roads area, and some localities actually proffer that, and the planning staff will keep track of the elevations that are chosen. But to make sure that we are doing it as well and not relying on planning staff, when those are proffer conditions.
And not having two of the same elevations side by side includes not just different buildings?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Completely different facades. So, to give you an example, if we have a floor plan called the Davidson, they cannot choose the same elevation B next door to each other. They'd have to be elevation B on one and then elevation E on another, if they're next door to each other.
But it'd be the same house?
It would be the same house, yes, ma'am. But if you look at the elevations, the massing is completely different, roof lines, the, in the rezoning, it basically said we had to provide craftsmen transitional or traditional, and we provided all of those. So, the same floor plan will have a transitional and a craftsman elevation.
Where did the elevations come from? Are those houses that you built or currently built?
Yes, sir. They are.
Because I went through every one of the elevations, and none of them are near to identical, for sure. None of the single-family homes on the proffer sheet have stone or brick, and many of the elevations, proposed elevations do. Actually, only the one has, it looks like, about three feet of brick on the garage. But on the ones marked "single-family" elevations, there's little to no use of those hard siding. Not that those are necessarily negative, but as well as differentiations of roof planes, if you will, you know, the, all of your, all four of your single-family proffered images of three types, and I just saw that very few of the, of the elevations match those types of in-plane differentiations that gives it character, as well as uses of sometimes as many as three colors, large, broad borders around the windows. If you go just to the next one, you know, you have borders around the windows, but they're not, not in the same fashion. All the, all the, all the front of the facade of the house is all in the same plane practically. Those were just some of my observations for the, for the commission. Many of the houses didn't appear that. And then the balconies weren't on any of the proffered homes, not necessarily a negative. And then the, I don't know what you call the, the homes with the kind of angled end of the gable, such as on page 16, weren't on any of the, of the proffered single-family elevations either. So, I guess the same question I had last month is, I'm sure more discussion to be had, but what is our objective? Should we submit to you? I mean, I marked all the ones that I thought were in close compliance. I'm not sure what our objective is.
Well, we would like consensus from the planning commissioners in order to provide feedback to allow this project to move forward.
And you'd like as much of that tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. We would love that, because we're ready to start selling our homes.
The, I agree with Darren that on the, the single-family, there's, there's not a tremendous amount of differentiation. There is some, and I mean, when you look at it really closely, as far as like between the first couple, the R1's brick, the other's not, but there's how, why the window casings are and that type of thing. I'm not seeing a whole lot of that. So, the, I'd like to see more variation personally of the single-family homes. You have much more variation with the two-story. Not that I dislike it. I like this one that has the windows, I like the look, the one that has the windows at the top, the three windows, but I, I think that it would be more appealing if it were out of brick, or at least some stucco and some, some stone or something.
Are you referring to the one on page 16?
I am. The top, and the gray one, dark light color.
Yeah, and that's a fine-looking home, but I looked at that one, and I didn't think that was substantially in compliance with the proffered homes at all. Same with the one above it, and the one above it, and the one above it. And when you scroll back and look, I just took a picture of the proffered homes with my phone and compared them side by side, and very few of the homes were substantially similar to the proffered elevations.
For instance, on 20, it is a two-story with the garage on the right, and it's got windows all the way across on the second story. I like that one because of the different elements, the exterior elements. I think that looks rich, and I think that's the look you're wanting. At least that's my, my take on it. So, that's where my perspective is.
Well, I would say, for us as a builder, when we look at a zoning case, we review the proffer conditions, and honestly, they're minimal. So, there's a lot of cases where we'll go through, and some of these things that you are pointing out would actually be called out of the proffer conditions. So, this is a, for us, I would say, a little more on the unique side, because you had a very small handful of elevations that were part of the zoning case and very minimal proffered conditions. However, one thing that was called out on some of those elevations were craftsmen transitional and traditional, and our architects, our licensed architects said, "Here are our craftsmen transitional and traditional elevations."
I was going to say, yeah, there's a lot more complexity in the craftsmen style and stuff on a two-story than there is on a single-story. And although this is a craftsman single-story, it's not going to have the differences in design that a two-story is going to add and the depth that it's going to have, so.
And the one-story, is that for 1,300, 1,500?
1,300 minimum, but for us, we're providing more square footage than that.
And, and of course, the two-story doesn't have square footage. Therefore, there's more mass to show the details.
Correct.
Any further discussion?
I'm still just trying to find a two-story craftsman. I think very few of them are substantially in compliance personally.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this item?
I'm not really sure what we're asked to do, because we've never been asked to do this before on the years that I've been on this, and I don't think it's my place as a developer what type of house to build, you know? I, I don't, just don't understand why they're before us.
I agree.
If he's certifying that he, the, the application required him to build craftsmen, what were the two, three?
Transitional and traditional.
And traditional. And if he's submitting craftsmen and transitional and traditional elevations, and he's certifying that, then he's meeting his conditions. And that's something that you're supposed to certify. I don't think the Planning Commission is supposed to substitute their personal preference on materials and colors and things like that. But you are supposed to certify that he is proposing elevations that comply with what was offered in the rezoning application.
I appreciate that. I will say that the ARB did deny our two-story front porches. So, they said that doesn't meet what the ARB would like. So, even though those are in front of you, we will not be able to build those, because ARB will not allow those.
ARB?
Architectural Reboard.
For who?
Uh, the developer.
Oh, the developer's architectural, okay.
So, should we submit you a page-by-page yes, no, yes, no, or, I mean, how would you, Tammy, would like us to resolve this?
My name's Hunter Taylor. I'm the Division President for Stanley Martin Homes. I'm the other builder. My address is 999 Jolly Pond Road, Williamsburg, Virginia. So, thank you for letting us be here tonight. One thing I did want to just make sure was clear, where are the two builders? The elevations in the, in the proffers were presented by the developer. He's not, he's not building the homes. So, in terms of, it's kind of, if you, if, this is a bad analogy, but if you had a GMC truck, and we are now a Ford truck, we can't make it look exactly like a GMC, but we can put all the requirements on the homes to make it. And so, there's certain things just between builders that are going to be a little bit different, just in roof pitches. You were talking about that. But everything's built on a 16-inch raised slab. We have to treat the foundations with brick and stone, and then our elevations have to be in conformance to what you see. The other thing to, I wanted to point out is, throughout the neighborhood, every four lots were, will be, Eastwood lots and every four lots will be Stanley Martin. So, there'll be natural variation between the community, in addition to the elevation requirements of not being able to build the same elevation next to each other or across the street.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
I would say, just right now, what we're looking for is the Planning Commission agreement, that they have certified that it's in conformance with the transitional, traditional, and craftsman style is what they've presented, and it substantially conforms.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clary, for clarification. Chair will entertain a motion. Or not.
I think I would make a motion that this seems to be in compliance with the, as proffered, as presented.
Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, are we agreeing that all of these are in substantial compliance?
With one of those three designs, I would concur that, yes. In one of those three designs, yes, they meet transit, they are, the architecture and the materials are per what's been proffered. Personally, are there some of them that I would not select? Yes, there are some that I would not select, but I'm, I don't have everybody's taste, and somebody else might like them. But is it in compliance with what they proffered and of the style that was presented? Yeah, they are substantially of that style.
We won't ask you to change it either. We won't ask you to change the proffer condition either.
Good.
Thanks for that.
Needs that. We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I have one question. On the townhouses, do you consider three stories or four stories?
Gentlemen, please.
We're, at this point, we're not building the townhomes yet, but when we get there, if we're, for a townhome, it'd most likely be two- and three-story townhomes. When you go to four-story, depending on the square footage amount, then we have to go to the commercial, which kind of changes everything with sprinkler and everything else.
But they stay within the height limitation?
I don't know much about the proffer or zoning ordinance for height limitations on the townhomes yet, because we haven't gotten to that point quite yet.
We're only building in the first phase.
Currently.
Yeah, they're not building.
We'll have to come back to you all with the elevations for the townhomes when we get to that phase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a motion and a second. Ms. Clary, would you call for the question?
For clarity purposes, then, let's say that that motion applies to the single-family dwellings, not, it does not apply to the townhouse elevations that are provided, is correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
No.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith? And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven is an entrance corridor overlay review with 1305 South Church Street. Krista Pickrell is the applicant. Ms. Clary, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking entrance corridor overlay review for the installation of a 13-foot-tall detached sign. It will feature an opaque black background with white illuminated letters, 36 inches by 120 inches for three panel signs. The base will be painted manor white to coordinate with the building, and there will be 180-foot landscaping bed with approximately 44 assorted plantings. We do recommend approval under the condition that a sign permit application is fee, fee is paid, and the submission of a landscaping bond at 120 percent of the cost estimate for $1,200. We also request that approval would extend beyond the two signs, so that if the applicant submitted a third sign panel that's in conformance with the black opaque and the illuminated white lettering, that it would already be approved. Thank you.
So, it'd be consistent. Great. Thank you for that. Is there any, anyone here from the application that wishes to speak? If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Krista Pickrell with Cardinal Signs out of Virginia Beach. I'm here yet again. Hopefully, there'll be no more surprises tonight unlike my last two visits. So, as you've seen in the drawings, I'm sure you have before you, there shouldn't really be any questions other than we are, have met the zoning ordinance code. We have met the illumination code concerning the opaque background with the white letters. Dr. Pope had made comments last, last month, and we've met his comments. So, I think, if you have any questions, just please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No, but I will say, it doesn't sound so heated. We're waiting.
I'm, I'm pretty defeated after the last, the last two. I'll tell you that. So, coming in here tonight, I was, I'm trying to stay positive, so.
Perhaps we can redeem ourselves in the last evening.
I'm hoping so. I appreciate that. I would rather leave here in a positive mood than to have my spirits crushed like the last two times, so. like the last two times, so, we will go with that.
Try not to kill your joy.
So.
Ladies and gentlemen, do we have a motion?
I think the sign is simple enough.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Is that your motion?
No, that was just a comment, I mean, you don't have to discuss a lot of different colors and all this other stuff, but.
I make a motion, we approve as presented with staff recommendations and also for the addition of a future third sign if necessary.
A second.
Great, there's been a motion and a second, um, I think we can do this by acclamation, if that's okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, Bill says no.
No, because.
Just kidding.
We need to call the class.
Okay.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith? And Chairwoman Hillgas?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. May I, may I ask one additional question, if that's okay? That concerns the opaque backgrounds. And this was, I was thinking about this, I know on freestanding signs, there are changeable message boards where people are allowed to change their messages on their signs, those are usually white with black letters. Um, I called our distributor today to see if they still make the black with the clear letter, and those have been, they don't make them anymore. So my concern is in the future, um, if someone wants to have a changeable message board, would they be allowed one? Since it would not be opaque, and if not, those of, for those that do have changeable message boards now that need to be, um, say, just a face change, would they be able to go back with the white with the black letters on them? This is just hypothetical for future reference.
Yeah. Uh, you mean like the freestanding?
Yeah, on the freestanding sign, people can change.
Individual letters on there versus a digital sign?
Correct.
Yeah. Ms. Clary, you got any guidance on that?
I'm trying to get to, I can get with you.
Okay.
Um, I have later data, I'm not sure, since we just updated, I know changeable message, uh, is addressed in a, in a separate area with different requirements than, than regular detached signage.
Okay, and, and the, it was approved for the logos not to be opaque anymore, that was approved already?
That will be at Town Council on March fourth.
March fourth, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, appreciate it all.
Thank you.
And we were nice to you.
Appreciate you very much this time.
Thank you, Ms. Pickrell.
We were nice last time.
I thought we were nice last time.
We were nice the first time, it was just confusing.
You tried to design the sign on the fly, that's her worst nightmare. Item number eight is entrance corridor overlay review, um, another one, ten eighteen South Church Street. Jacob Walls is the applicant, Ms. Clary, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is thinking, seeking entrance corridor overlay review and approval for alterations to the parking lot and building renovations, they intend to pave the existing gravel parking lot located at the front side and rear of the property, and they are planning on replacing the wooden wheelchair ramp in the front of the building with composite decking, which will remain the light gray color. We do support this application with the condition that the applicant completes a zoning permit application and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Seeing none, does planning commission have any discussion? About this item?
I think it's a welcome, welcome change. Typically, coming before the planning commission asking for a waiver of paved parking lots, but to come here and voluntarily do one, I, I, I think it's quite welcome. And also as part of what's happening at the town bank. I think we're seeing improvements here, I think we're seeing improvements along South Church Street. Hopefully sometime we'll get the, uh, the back play of connecting, uh, the parks and Battery, Battery Park Road.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Yes.
Other permits, questions?
Yeah, I have a question, a comment, similarly, I, I think it looks great, I think it's going to be a great addition, improvement to the town and South Church Street and this business. Uh, as part of the application process, I'm just thinking, you know, back to the previously discussed business, somebody comes before with an application, especially used per an event or not, they just want to make it an alteration. So do we look at this business on the whole and verify, you know, this business is in full compliance with all zoning requirements when it, when they come to the town for something?
So we just updated the entrance corridor in regards to gravel parking and landscaping, it's fifty percent assessed value improvements over a rolling five-year period is what the planning commission decided on.
Right, but, so only a change triggers that, so. Asphalt cost and parking lot was a big change for, for that other business previously, they got that waived, obviously by the Town Council. Uh, redoing, uh, ramp, I mean, do we take a, a whole look at that? And it's, you know, that's less than half of the value of the property?
So they're improving the gravel with pavement. If they were increasing the assessed value more than fifty percent over that five-year period, we would require them to replace the gravel and bring it into the standard, so stand, the ACO guidelines do require paved, the gravel is a waiver.
Say answer to question, Mr. Cutler.
I understand the answer, it doesn't really answer my question, but we can, I can ask it again offline.
Okay. Further discussion on this item?
There is one question, I, I, I would really appreciate it if the applicant was here. When we doing the paving, when he's doing the paving, uh, what about the stormwater runoff? I mean, this is an impervious surface, is there, does it, is it large enough to trigger that, or?
Gravel is impervious, gravel and the asphalt are treated the same from a stormwater perspective.
Asphalt, you're saying asphalt drains?
No, you're saying they consider gravel impervious. The state does.
The paving is a solid surface, correct? That, is that what I understand?
It's asphalt.
Asphalt.
Gravel and asphalt are treated the same for the stormwater review. When we do issue a waiver or permit for it, it will go out to the county and it, and they handle our stormwater if they require any additional mechanisms, that would be triggered at their stormwater review. It's not in our way.
The county still does that, because I thought something changed with the DEQ was, was taking over that.
We're still working out the logistics.
Okay, so the county still does it, at this point?
Right now, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else for the discussion on this application? Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve as presented.
A second.
With the conditions that. There you go.
Uh, with the condition that the applicant completes a zoning permit application and free fee payment.
There you go.
A second.
Still stand?
Yes, second.
Very good, it's been a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion for you, call for vote.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hillgas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine is a discussion item on the promontory, Kent Henry is the applicant, Ms. Clary, do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning, this would be to the planned mixed-use development. This is to facilitate the construction of five commercial lots, a future commercial area, one-hundred-and-fifty-four single-family detached units, one-hundred-and-eight single-family attached units, which would comprise twenty villas, eighty-eight townhouse units, a maximum of two-hundred-and-sixty-two units in total. They would also be providing twenty-two-point-four-seven acres of open space. The project will be phased, starting with the commercial sites. The road beside Tractor Supply will be extended into a cul-de-sac with a network of public roads connecting to Cypress Run Drive and Turner Drive. In order to facilitate this project, the applicants have provided first for a conditional official zoning map amendment, which is a rezoning. The uses that the applicant is proposing, which are the attached and detached units, fast food restaurant, car wash, restaurant, drive-in bank, are permissible in the planned mixed-use development district. They are, these uses are also in line with the future land use map as the current designations are for residential mixed-use and corridor mixed-use, which provide for primary residential uses and primary mixed-commercial multifamily residential uses. They will need a special use permit in accordance with Article three J two C seven for drive-through facilities. The applicant is requesting flexibility to utilize drive-through facilities on all five commercial parcels. The current plan has a drive-in bank and a fast food restaurant with a drive-through window. The second special use permit is for a waiver of yard requirements for reduced setbacks. This is for the proposed fast food restaurant, two sit-down restaurants, car wash and bank, along with the residential. The required, uh, the required commercial setbacks would be front forty feet, side twenty feet, rear twenty feet. The applicant is proposing a commercial front yard setback of fifteen feet, zero feet for the side and rear. The required residential setbacks, front thirty-five feet, side fifteen feet and rear thirty-five feet. For the townhouse, they are proposing a ten-foot front yard setback and five-foot side and rear setbacks. The villa and single-family dwellings will have a front setback of fifteen and also a side and rear of five feet. The third special use permit is for a waiver of maximum density. This is only for the attached units, which exceed the eight units per net develop acre at fourteen-point-thirty-six units per net develop acre. The detached single-family dwellings are under the maximum density at four-point-six-eight units per acre with an overall density of five-point-three-six units. Finally, a planning commission waiver, this is for a waiver of the fifty-foot buffer requirement. The applicants are requesting that it would be reduced to approximately ten-foot buffer with landscaped screening. This is in accordance with Article three J two I eleven. This allows the planning commission to reduce the minimum setback on a case-by-case basis. Uh, they will include one or more of various amenities, trails, uh, multipurpose areas, grilling, kayak, outdoor games. Uh, they will have a properties owners association that will be responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the stormwater BMPs and landscaped buffered areas as shown in the conceptual plan. And they are proffering, uh, the following road improvements on the southbound right turn lane, and then also a conditional payment towards the construction of the roundabout at Turner Drive. And finally, a conditional cash proffer to Isla White County Schools if they are over enrollment capacity at the Smithfield Middle School at the time of CO issuance. Uh, we did include the comments that we received from the Isla White County Museum, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a discussion item, where would you like to start? Oh, okay. Um, it's my understanding the applicant has a presentation, so let's start there.
This is also on your computers as a second tab of the PDF.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Kent Henry, I'm with Greenwood Homes, uh, division president for the Hampton Roads Market, my address is thirty-one twenty-two West Marshall Street. I'll lead you through this presentation here, and then at the end, certainly turn it over for comments, questions, and, um, myself and my team that I have here hopefully can address most of those, and then anything else, we can get back to you all. So here's the general development plan for the project, you'll notice the five commercial parcels on Ben's Church Boulevard. You'll notice the orange, which is the twenty villas, and then the pink or magenta is the townhomes, and we transitioned to single-family detached, uh, in the rear of the project. And part of this thought here is to, uh, keep the density for the townhouse and the attached villa units closer to the commercial and kind of create more of a natural transition to the single-family and larger lots as we work back through the neighborhood. As Ms. Clary stated, uh, we're requesting three special use permits, then also a waiver for the buffer requirement. The drive-through facilities, I think, are relatively self-explanatory. As we're working through the commercial, we have intended uses, um, as tenants come to us, we're, um, certainly seller is valuing kind of their proposals and can change the usage some, so the flexibility to have the drive-through on all five is certainly beneficial. Waiver for requirements for reduced setbacks, similar on the commercial side, is just giving us the flexibility to design those five parcels to the potential tenants that are coming and make it work for them. From a residential perspective, the reduced waivers allow us to create more of a dynamic streetscape by varying our forty-foot single-family detached product, fifty-foot product, and even sixty-foot product as we work through the neighborhood. You'll see a standard lot layout, which is our forty-foot product and probably our most popular, called the Aspen. You'll see how that fits on a typical lot in the neighborhood. The flexibility with those setbacks allows us to bump that out to fifty-foot home and change the home types, creating that more dynamic landscape as you work down the street. Um, the third special use permit, waiver of maximum density, again, that is pertaining to kind of focusing the attached product behind the commercial, which allows us to keep more open spaces and we kind of work back through the community, um, and into that single-family detached. I'll note that the waiver of the fifty-foot buffer requirement reduced to ten is something that we are evaluating now and processing some revisions, so before you all see us again, uh, you will see a revised plan that addresses that area. Here's a blown-up section of the zoning concept to the east showing those commercial parcels and how they tie in to Turner Drive and Ben's Church Boulevard, as well as the townhouse and attached product that is behind the Tractor Supply and the strip mall off of Cypress Run Drive. Here you can see we, we work west into the single-family detached portion of the project for the one-hundred-and-fifty-fourth single-family detached units. I think an important thing to note, as a part of our application, we are proffering, um, six phases, first phase being commercial, um, I'll hand it over to Bob Thornton here in a second, who's a commercial broker that is working on this project with us, but there's been a lot of, um, interest in the commercial, and the seller has actually passed up a couple opportunities to sign leases and offers of sale to date. So main focus for us is bringing that commercial on early so that those tenants can get going, get site plans in and start construction and bring that online. And then from there, we work into five phases of residential to hopefully help make sure that, you know, improvements related to traffic are in place and school capacity issues are drawn out over the eight-year build cycle as people are moving in. Here are some commercial renderings, I'll note that we do recognize that, um, we are in ERC, so any commercial architecture will have to come back in front of you all as the tenants are signed up. And Bob, do you want to say a few things about commercial real quick?
Sure, I'd like to. Um, my name is Bob Thornton, I work for the commercial real estate firm Talheimer in Virginia Beach, and I, I started working in Smithfield back in two thousand and eight. I was retained by the Yeoman Trust and some other property owners here to market commercial properties. I've been fortunate enough, excuse me, to, uh, put the Tractor Supply, the Dollar Tree, the O'Reilly's, uh, the dentist on Church Street, uh, the Wawa that's going up at Turner and which really precipitated the traffic circle, if you will, and the Sweetgrass Project across the street from the Yeoman Trust. On this site, up to this point, uh, we have commitments from a bank, and we had, Caliber Collision was going to go on the site, but couldn't because we've gone through four years of, of getting to where we are tonight, trying to get it zoned. Uh, we have a national restaurant chain that's committed, that is the reason for probably the, the drive-in window, and I, I'm sure you all realize, when you do traffic analysis for these various parcels, you have to tell the engineer what you want to put there, and then they create a traffic study based on that use. Well, we didn't think it was prudent to put in five Chick Fillets on five sites on Church Street, so we've got a variation of different restaurants to generate different levels of traffic. So as of today, we have two somewhat committed users, one would be a bank and one would be a, a fast food restaurant. And so my goal in, in speaking to you tonight, what I hope to accomplish is to stress that this commercial site is now tied in with the residential property, and we are here to work together to get both of them zoned and taken care of. We see this, these, these sites. We see this, these, these sites as providing businesses for the community that would like to be in church and Smithfield, employment opportunities. Uh, it's also, as he stated, it's going to participate in the cost of the roundabout, which once, once Sweetgrass and once Wawa and the bank on that corner started looking at sites, it was obvious to VDOT that all of a sudden we've got to deal with traffic at that intersection. So this project will participate in the cost of the solution to that. And, uh, with that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions about the commercial piece of it.
I'll keep working through the presentation real quick if you want to hang it up here. So, you know, as part of this, um, application, we have a pattern book with, um, some sample elevations and some proffered exterior finishes. Up top, you'll see, uh, an example elevation of our three-story townhouse, which will be under the thirty-five height requirement. All of our buildings in the promontory will meet that. Bottom left, you'll see example of the Aspen, which was that lot that was on the standard lot typical diagram. And on the right, bottom right, you'll see our villa product. I guess a few things to note real quick. Greenwood Homes, um, we're a semi-custom home builder. We have in-house architecture and a design gallery and full design team. Uh, we really pride ourselves on product variation. We have over thirty single-family detached products. We stick to our townhouse because we think we do really well and our villa, which is our best-selling unit, um, across markets. We have an emphasis on universal design, which, um, we can talk a little, a little bit more later, um, but that is wider doorways, zero-step entry into the garage to allow you to age gracefully in place, uh, which has been a big benefit, uh, that we've seen in some of our communities. With this, the pattern book, we are proffering, um, cement siding, so James Hardy, um, or equivalent, so other solid-state sidings, um, standing metal seam accent roofs, architectural shingles, masonry and real stone foundations, as well as parched and lattice. You'll notice that these elevations have siding down, um, pretty much past the water table, but, um, we do have more elevations that we can include, um, if directed to kind of help flush that out. And then synthetic decks as well, uh, are just some of the differences. And I'll go into our building specifications as well. Um, I, I talked about universal design, um, all of our interior countertops granite. We have an upgraded LVP upgraded carpet, um, all dovetail sock closed cabinets, um, really down to the nitty-gritty of wood shelving in closets. A lot of times now you'll see wire racks. We still do wood. Garage doors are insulated. We're an all train and all Kohler builder, so all train, um, HVAC and then Kohler products on the inside. So really that's just what comes with the Greenwood home. We try and, um, you know, still be able to deliver at a price point that works for our buyers as, in giving them more of a custom finish, but also keeping down our days under construction. And so we kind of try and blend in in between, um, you know, some of the national builders and the custom builders that are in the area as well. I've showed some photos here of existing Greenwood Homes. Uh, we have a project in Pecosin, which is the closest to us currently. Uh, happy to, you know, put together a tour or give access codes for Commissioners to kind of review our architecture in person because really, uh, pictures and renderings don't do it justice. But here are a couple just to help paint the picture. And then amenities, we have proffered amenities, um, throughout the community. We have a total of seven parks and a trail system. Uh, post-COVID, we've focused on more active and engaging communities and amenities that residents will actually use. We noticed people kind of shifting away from being in a clubhouse. So really our drive is to get people out on the sidewalks, out on the streets, meeting their neighbors, um, spending time in the parks. Um, a big amenity for us is the lake. Certainly that's thirty-three acres, um, so we're providing lake access for fishing, kayaks, canoes, um, and, you know, un-motorized water sports. And then traffic plan, we have four points of access. Main access at Cypress Run Drive. We have public road A at the tractor supply, public road J that splits the commercial, and then the extension of public road B that ties into Turner Drive. Um, this is consistent with the Ben's Church Master TIA. Uh, we have the associated traffic proffers, uh, improvements proffered with the two turn lanes and tapers, as well as a contribution to the roundabout. Um, originally, we weren't showing the connection to Turner Drive and at the request of staff, county and VDOT, we went ahead and secured the right-of-way and the extension to Turner Drive and are willing to participate in the roundabout. Uh, one thing I will note is that Cypress Run Drive currently is private. We are cleaning up the ownership there. We will improve Cypress Run Drive and then turn it over to the town as part of our project. Um, something to note is that the town does have a utility station at the end of Cypress Run Drive with presumably an access easement, but throughout this process, we'll have true public road access to a town facility. School impacts, so this is from the letter dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four from Dr. Chris Coleman, Deputy Superintendent of Operations at Isla White County Schools. Um, with the rezone of divisions, we are producing eighty-nine students. Um, as of right now, there is capacity at the schools, but we understand through this letter that, um, Hardy, Westside and Smithfield will be at ninety-five to ninety-nine percent capacity as the promontory is coming online and Smithfield Middle will be over capacity. So we have proffered, um, a conditional cash proffer to Isla White County Schools for our impacts at Smithfield Middle School if it's over capacity as we are putting students into the school system. And then fiscal impacts, um, just some touch notes here. Once stabilized, the expected cash flow for the town is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year with the expected surplus revenue of one point five over ten years. Then Isle of Wight has the cash flow of one point two million dollars a year and nine point four over the ten million dollars a year. And most of that is associated with, um, the difference there, the utilities going through Isle of Wight as we're on Isle of Wight Water and Sewer as opposed to the town. And then I will open it up for questions and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Question, comments for the applicant?
I guess I'll, I'll start with the commercial as we're opening up comments. Um, the buildings look very modern and one of the things that we push is sort of the colonial style and, and whatever. So I just wanted to make sure that, and like I said, you've done work here for a while, so you recognize, you know, the push to, to make sure we have a, you know, a colonial flair to the, the businesses and stuff along the entrance corridor and such, so.
Well, what, what happens, let's, let's pick, you know, a retailer that has their own, you know, their own look. And one of the, the rubs that happens is we say to, you know, restaurant A, you need to make it look like a colonial building. And they say, well, we're in the business of selling something. And so that, that will be worked out. I think he mentioned earlier that the elevations will be subject to review. There's only so much you can make, a Chick-fil-A or a bank or a McDonald's or a Wendy's or a Hardee's, but they do, you know, there are businesses in town now that have tried to make that colonial look or that less modern look. But the, the retailers now, especially the food people, are really going for a clean, neat, modern look. And so I, I, I would, I would hope that when you all review it, when the final people get here, just realize that they have stores all over the United States of America and they'll do their best to make it look like Smithfield, but in some cases they can't. And we don't want them to go away because of the elevation, but that, that will be considered in the process.
And we wouldn't want them to go away, but I know that I was here on the commission when Wendy's was going up and they came to us with their, you know, their regular Wendy's, but they worked with us. And if you go to Williamsburg, you're going to see Wendy's and McDonald's, especially if you go someplace like Ashland. I mean, it's been a long time since I was there, but McDonald's did not look like McDonald's, but it still had the golden awnings. And so it can be done. Um, I don't think we're going to be that hard to work with, but we will have some standards like that.
Well, we'll, you know, as we, we've only got one totally committed, one, uh, warmly committed and several that have wanted to go on this parcel and we couldn't make it available and a car wash moved away and said, we can't wait, uh, co- uh, cali- the collision place moved downtown and found a building to rent on Church Street Caliber. And so there are others that, you know, I've got people calling me all the time, when are we going to have property available? We have basically three lots to market and we've got, you know, people that have spoken to. We'll make it perfectly clear as we meet with people that you're going to have to reach out and try to make it look nice and let, let the town, you know, bless it. Uh, but I will say that some of these, you know, you, you ride around, we all ride around the eating restaurants and some look colonial and some don't, some can. So I, I think that most of the folks will work well with you to try to do that and we would hope that you would do the same.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Can you help me understand the ten-foot buffer and the fifty-foot buffer? Is this in the back where they're buffering for the houses or is this in the front buffering from Ben's Church Boulevard?
It's a fifty-foot buffer required when it abuts a residential zoning district and that's zoned to the community conservation, um, so it would go along the, the sides of the property for like the Molly Turner and the To Willigers.
To give me an idea, um, Pizza Hut, how far is that from the road? That be about what they're talking about for their commercial buildings?
Yes, sir. Is it a buffer from the road or is it a buffer between the orange homes and the?
Well, are they talking about it? Well, I think it's talking about it from the road, isn't it?
So the, the landscaped buffer is along, if you're looking at the general development plan there, it's along the top and the, the bottom essentially is where it's going to go.
Correct. So the, um, planning commission waiver request is associated with this buffer, Plan North, and then this section right here, Plan South. So neighbors on, uh, this side of the Molly Turner Trust and then the To Willigers on this parcel. And again, I want to, I want to note that we are, um, reevaluating, um, and redesigning this buffer here. And so that when, again, when our project comes in front of you, next time there will be a revision, um, associated with this buffer. But these are the two buffers that that, um, request is associated with.
And the commercial properties up front, they have the appropriate buffer off of the highway as drawn? Green space in front, all of that, all that's in compliance with the ECO setbacks on the front for the commercial?
So we don't, we don't have a site plan yet, so we don't know exactly where the, the buildings are being positioned. For this rezoning application, they are asking for reduced setbacks for that commercial, um, with the, I want to say, the zero for the side and rear and then the fifteen for the front.
And the setback goes from the road to the beginning of the parking lot? Along and along, um, and it's church Boulevard? So the fifteen would go in there?
So it would go from their, their property line, from the front of the property line to the front of the building. Now there are, uh, the entrance corridor does have buffer requirements that they would be required to comply with or get a planning commission waiver. Again, we don't have the site plan layout yet, that phase. This is just the rezoning phase of the project.
So we're not moving a, or recommending for people the setback?
This is just a discussion item for tonight.
And I'll, I'll note that any feedback and commentary is much appreciated. I know this is really our first work session with the commission, so, um, we understand it will be a process and there will be some revisions here, so.
Okay, speak for myself, but, you know, getting a fifteen-foot setback from the front of the property would not be ideal for me because we have buildings setback from the church and tractor supply. And so to put these buildings way up front, up on the road would, would, would definitely not be ideal to me. And where you have them drawn in blue are more appropriate, they're more in line with what's there and moving them forward and, and giving you the commercial special use permit variance would be very difficult, even for zero sideline setback on those. It looks like you've got plenty of property to deal with there and I just don't see why we need to give one a, on that commercial versus the required, especially on lots that are that size.
Thank you.
For the building, you know, parking lots, things like that, a little different, but for the building.
So you don't know exactly what the setback is of those blue buildings that retail, the commercial? You don't know what setbacks are right now?
So the setback right now is drawn is ten feet off of the Ben's Church Boulevard right-of-way. Those are, I don't have a scale with me, but, I mean, all of fifty feet.
So when, Dr. Paul, when you refer to the buffer, you're talking about the landscaping that from the?
Well, there's a couple of buffers in effect. There's the side buffers you just mentioned, but there's also going to be ECO buffers up on the, on the commercial side.
So certainly the front buffer off of Ben's Church Boulevard for the commercial, something to evaluate.
Because I really don't want a bunch of buildings up on the road as close as you can get them.
So you're asking for a reduction in the ECO buffer? That's where I lost that. Because the blue, what I'm looking at here is around the blue, the, the light area around the blue, that's parking lots as such.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And, and they go up, they're pretty close to Ben's Church. That's what it looks like to me. So there is no land buffer. I think it's, ECO requires a forty-foot buffer from the road? And that's, you asking us to waive that? Is that, you asking us to do that?
That's what's on the plan, yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry. The planning commissioner, commission waiver is for the landscaped buffer that separates this parcel from a residential parcel on the sides.
That's different.
It's a fifty-foot land, it's a fifty-foot buffer or landscaped area reduced on a case-by-case basis per planning commission waiver.
That's special use permit one.
That's the last one. That's the planning commission waiver request.
You're, you're worried about? I'm talking about special use permit number two, where you're asking to put the building fifteen feet from the property line in the front.
Right.
Yes.
Which, which I'm saying I think is way too close to the road and way too close to the front property line.
Certainly. And I appreciate the feedback. Again, I think, um, the intent here was to keep the flexibility for the commercial. As Bob said, we have a couple of interested tenants, one who's ready to go, one who's warm, um, but as we're getting more tenants, it was keeping that flexibility. But hearing the, uh, commission's concern, certainly we can go back and evaluate.
There seems to be a trend of putting car washes right on the sidewalk, right on Mercury Boulevard, and that's not the intent that I wish to see here.
Certainly.
Same thing itself, but, yeah.
Well, and for any of those buildings, we want them right up fifteen feet to the building. Now, if it's the parking lot, that's something different in one way.
Yes, but not the building. For the commercial side of this, on, on your, the way you have it organized here, there's a commercial component and then a residential component, but the commercial component does not seem to jive very well for me.
Agree. To answer Vice Chair's question about the Pizza Hut, we believe it is approximately fifteen feet setback, the building is.
That's, that was one of the closest that I could think of.
Other discussion?
Yes, I got a question. My concern is about the proffers. If you remember, Sweetgrass on opposite side of the street. If you remember, Sweetgrass on opposite side of the street through the county, Alawaye. The planning commission voted to deny that development. And of course, the board of supervisors decided otherwise. Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when I looked at that, when the board of supervisors got that application and approved it, there seems to have been an addition of proffers for schools, or seats, there were a number of seats. And I don't believe that was on there when it came to the planning commission. Am I correct on that?
That's my understanding, but I was not a part of that project, just following along.
Okay. So, from there, we have high school, middle school, elementary, elementary school. And I see your proffers for, for the school is only for the middle school.
Correct.
Why would you ignore the high school and the elementary schools? Students wouldn't be coming from that development for those?
There would be, but the report that we received was that there was capacity at those levels, so we were unable to offer a proffer to address that. The only capacity that was tripped was the Smithfield Middle School, so we addressed.
And you use what data to reach that conclusion?
A report coming fr, through Ms. Clary from Alawaye County Schools.
Does this one consider the one that, that was a school official, I mean, Ms. Briggs, I believe, a couple of years ago?
Lynn Briggs, yes.
Is, is based on that?
That is correct.
Does that estimate take into account all approved growth in the vicinity?
And that's where I wanna go.
Their calculations are proprietary, so they don't share how they come across their evaluation of the, of the products, is what we've been told. But we do send it to them and, and they are responsible for the schools and they give us the report out that we can provide the applicants.
So we don't really know, so you're basing it on one development?
Or cumulative.
Or a cumulative, which is a problem if they're only doing it on one development.
So during the joint meeting with Town Council and the Board of Supervisors, there was a spreadsheet that was presented that did account for the approved development, the development that was currently being developed, being developed. And the suggestion was, I believe, to, to further study that, to break it out by year, to account for as development completed and as development came on board and as students left and as students came in. So they're still working on that aspect of it.
But what's unique about this proffer for schools, if I'm reading it correctly, is if they are over just by the time they build. So if they build before everybody else builds and you don't create, well, you're adding students, so you're creating the problem, but you don't have the problem, you're not gonna contribute to the schools because you beat the other developers to the punch. That's what's wrong in this situation, is because all the other developers have gotten away with not making a proffer towards the school, even though all of the developments are contributing towards the problem. Y'all are saying, "Well, we'll contribute if at the time we contribute, we're there." But if you come in here and build, your, your subdivision's considerably smaller than Mallory Point, and so there's a probably high likelihood you can get your homes built before they do, so you can sneak under the wire and you'll never contribute. So even though this is a nice proffer, I don't see that it's ever gonna probably come to fruition. It looks good on paper, it's there legally, but I'm not sure if it's really gonna pan out. Because it's, if you, 'cause if you, 'cause this is what's wrong with the proffer. And this is what your discussion is, is all these developments have created an overage, then everybody should be contributing at their overage, no matter when they go, no matter when you got the development. But I know that's not what legal and what Virginia's gonna say on the ordinance. But that's what's wrong with this whole thing is, yeah, that, they're saying that right now, the schools can absorb his development irrespective of all the others. And that's been the problem all along over the last years of all of these developments, is that we might have contributed five hundred kids to the school, but we're not building these developments tomorrow. They might be built in two years, they might be built in thirty years, it took Cypress Creek from nineteen ninety-five till now. So that's the hard part with this proffer, is it, it looks good on paper, but I'm not sure it's practical. Because I, because you, I think y'all are gonna, if, if you get the approval, I think you're gonna beat the other developments to the finish line. That's gonna be my opinion on that. And so therefore, your proffer's really not gonna come into effect. It looks good, you're gonna contribute to the schools, but yet, we still lose out.
Right, and I, I hear you and my understanding, and I can defer to my attorney here, but for us to offer a cash proffer, there needs to be a directly attributable need, which is the schools being overcapacity, so I, I fully hear ya.
I just don't think it's gonna be a practical proffer, is all, because, I mean, you, you got a nice development, it's, it's on the, I won't call it the smaller side, but it's just because of land constraints, but I think you're gonna get a lot more built than other developers are gonna be able to do.
Understood, and I, I will note that, again, our projections for the project through the five residential phases, it's an eight-year build-out before, you know, put a shop, or the first home is completed to the last home is sold. And certainly, that is market-driven with the pace that we work through the community.
Do you have a limit on how many building permits y'all are pulling?
It's not included in the proffers, but certainly something we can consider.
I mean, I don't know, because like Mallory Point may be pulling a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty building permits a year or something to that effect, per, potentially.
Their proffer was a hundred and twenty-five COs per year. That's irrespective of the number of building permits or zoning permits that they could pull, that they could only CO a hundred and twenty-five units.
Right, and we're at, what, two, two sixty, what was it?
Two sixty-two.
Yeah, so it's two years of development. That's what I'm saying, I think you can beat 'em. And that's why I don't understand these proffers for schools, because, you know, we're contributing, we're adding to the development, but nobody else has proffered this and, and, I don't know, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem right. Anyways, it's just my take on it, I don't know the proffer situation, I don't know how to make it right, it just doesn't seem like it's gonna actually pay out.
Yeah, I have to agree with you on that. I mean, to say, my, my student makes it a hundred percent, so I don't have to pay. But now I build the next house and now I'm at a hundred and one, a hundred point one percent. All the, all the growth contributes to the problem, but it's all being dodged. But I'm not sure if the, the definition of creating a substantial impact is going over a hundred, one hundred percent. I think there, you know, if I've, if my bank account got to a hundred percent empty, I would say, you know, I had a problem a long time ago, not once I've reached my maximum, you know, point of no return.
Certainly, understood, and it's something we can evaluate further. I can get with legal on what we're able to do, understanding the commission's concerns.
Ms. Clary, was any timeline associated with those revised numbers from Alawaye Public Schools? We had sent the revised submittal. We have not received comments yet from Alawaye County Schools. We did receive comments this morning from the planning, from Amy Ring with the planning department.
Thank you.
Don't read the Clary, if I may. In the ordinances that we're dealing with here, promontory, the, the promontory, I guess I was pronouncing, promontory?
Correct.
Pre-application conference required, and of course, with three J point two, point one, six, point eight. Is that what we're doing now, or is there something to be scheduled in the future?
No, that is something that happened a couple years ago.
Yes, we were in that one.
That, that's what, that's what they're calling that.
We've been working on this project for, for a while.
I'm not privy to this information and I'm sure it's been decided, but why is Alawaye County supplying the water?
As part of the, the Town Council made a revision to its water agreement with the county. Years ago, we were going to accept water, bulk water and buy it from the county, which is surface water. And all the rest of our water is groundwater. And so at the time we made that deal, the, the expense and complication of that was really unknown. And when it came time to put that into effect, the town realized that it was unworkable. And so we amended our, the Town Council amended its water agreement and agreed that we would maintain our system as a groundwater-only system. And in order to meet the water needs in that part of the town, water will come from the county and it's gonna be surface water, not groundwater.
But who's gonna maintain the development? Is the town gonna then service and use our town money while they're paying the county? Or how's that, how's that gonna work?
The county will be responsible for maintaining the, the water in the sewer.
Like that link for you?
Yes, sort of. That's, that was sort of. But that was, that was different, but sort of.
Right.
But one other question. Maybe someone else has other things. But in your amenities, the pond, that was man-made, correct? That's from digging in the quarry?
Correct.
Borrow pit.
Say it again?
A borrow pit.
Okay, but it's man-made?
Yes.
Okay. You said potentially a dock could be extended to Cypress Creek. How would you do that? Cypress Creek isn't on the property, how would you do that?
That was a part of our original applications. We no longer will be pursuing a dock to Cypress Creek. All of our amenities will be internal to the site. There'll be a tra, an earthing trail that won't require any disturbance through the wetlands, and we'll get down closer to Cypress Creek, but we are no longer proceeding with a dock on Cypress Creek.
Okay, thank you.
Talking about the amenities real quick, I think there's a wordage in here that you will provide one or more of the following, including without limitation, one or more of the following. Seeing what happened in Cypress Creek and what happened with all of their recent development and not following through on what they promised, I'd like to see that language changed to what you are going to offer, not what you would or could offer.
Certainly, and, and happy to do that. And we have an amenity plan that was put together by an engineering firm, site design, that is shown within the pattern book, and I can certainly define that in the proffers better.
I don't care what amenities you offer, but I just would like for the homeowners association board to be more black and white, that we are doing this, not we could do this, please.
Certainly, we can revise the language in the proffer. That's something that, you know, it's a little unique with us. We're builder developer here. And so for me, I'm worried about the end user and ultimately selling homes. And that means I need my amenities in place up front, my landscaping looking great, and then well-maintained site as we go through and work through our construction, because really, it's a lot easier to sell to someone when you can point to your amenity and your dock and your beach and community gardens and hammock garden, as opposed to telling them that, yes, this is gonna be coming at some point in the future. So we're focused on getting those up front and put in with their respective phases, and I'm happy to spell that out more in the proffers.
And then this is getting into the nitty-gritty here, but just as I read through it, your foundations, are you gonna carry the same treatment on all four sides because it says something about it being a porch?
Yeah, the foundation treats, treatments in the pattern book say porch lattice, real stone and masonry.
But it's gonna be, is, is all four treatments gonna be, is the same treatment on the front of the building gonna be the same thing on the sides and the back?
Not necessarily. Typically, we do a wrap with our real stone so that it extends down the water table on the side of the house, but doesn't go the whole way to the back.
I have a few questions. So you're gonna build all the homes, Greenwood Homes?
Yes, sir.
And the commercial? Or the...
We're gonna develop the commercial, but tenants will come in for that.
Are you building other homes in Alawaye?
We have the St. Luke's Villages parcel purchased in one of our development entities, but right now, there's no plan on that parcel as of now. Well, there's an approved plan, I should say, and then a rezoning that's been working. But we're still working the St. Luke's project, and then we have been contacted by the developers of the Grange to potentially be a building partner in there, but nothing is signed as of now.
What do, what do you see as the price point for these homes?
Our, I see the attached high threes, low fours, and certainly working up as the community gets built out. Singles, starting in the high fives, low sixes, for kind of the interior units, and then certainly some premium on the waterfront lots or the larger lots that back up to the wetlands.
So you think the max would be?
Eight.
Those homes backing up on the wetlands, will they be able to build docks on the, on Cypress Creek?
No, we're gonna restrict all of that in our covenants.
Including the pond?
Pardon?
Including the pond?
Including the pond.
No piers?
No piers.
You didn't have the, that pond is?
Four to twelve feet.
Yeah, related to the pond, so it's man-made, it's got, must have run into a spring when they were digging it, I imagine. And does it have a manufactured runoff pathway?
Joe, do you wanna handle stormwater?
My name's Joe Fodell, I'm the engineer of Bay Companies. I don't believe that pond has a stormwater runoff, riser and outfall, but as part of our development, we're going to install one that's gonna be metering out the runoff into Cypress Creek.
Thank you. And then related to your special use permits, so the, the drive-through facilities sound straightforward. The proposed restaurants, are they unique to Smithfield? Wouldn't be repeats of places that we already have up on the other side of town or anything like that? Your fast food restaurants, we have a, we already have like a french fry alley in town. The proposed restaurants that are seeking to do business, they wouldn't be repeats of restaurants that we already have?
The one that we're talking to now is not a repeat.
Okay.
Any other two restaurants, are they, I mean, you don't know them?
We don't know that.
All we have is one that's shown interest, and they're just waiting for us to get through the process. But that one restaurant is not here.
Thank you. Your reduced setbacks and for your second special use permit for your homes, so five yards on the side, ten, I'm sorry, it's five feet on the sides, ten feet on the front. Why is that necessary and why, why, why should the, why should the commission approve that or recommend approval?
Yeah, so I think the, the, the ten feet relates to the attached product. And again, I think that the location behind the commercial is a good area to pick up density and to deliver homes that are around the four hundred thousand dollar price point into the customer. So that setback is associated with allowing us to get that density for the towns and the villas. And then the fifteen-foot setback in the front, five on the sides and five in the rear for the singles, allows us to get that variation of our product type, where we're not just building strictly forty-foot product, where we can build forty-foot product, fifty-foot product, there's some lots that allow us to build a sixty, to help us cater to a wider range of the market and also diversify that streetscape.
When you refer to those with, are you talking about the villas? Is that the villas vary or the townhouses?
The variants in the single-family footprint of forty, fifty and sixty. All of our villas are thirty feet wide, all of our townhouses are twenty feet wide.
Are your villas duplexed, the one image depicted?
We have these depicted in, a couple are duplexes and then strips of three and four. They're the orange on the plan up here.
Okay. And then your third permit request for max density, clearly you have, you know, a fixed piece of property, but, you know, the, the citizens of Smithfield aren't... aren't really fans of that level of density. So it's, is this fixed, or is this something that you can work to improve? Because working within your by right build, you know, would be much more palatable than requesting almost triple, I believe that's triple the density that's permitted for that, am I correct?
I believe the density for attached is eight an acre, so.
Okay, so almost double.
About double, right?
Yeah.
And it's certainly something we can evaluate, but again, I guess our focus was keeping that density in the seven and a half roughly acres right behind the commercial. You know, we could look at expanding out the density and kind of pulling the towns further, and we'd probably get under that eight units an acre. But again, I think it's a natural transition coming from a commercial parcel to your taller, more dense product. And then as you get into the community, it's larger lots, better spacing, and it does allow for us to pick up more open space and pocket parks by kind of densifying this area right behind the commercial. So certainly something we can look at, but the intent there was to keep that attached density in proximity to the commercial and then, you know, neck down the density as we work into the single-family detached on the remainder of the parcel.
Is there a parcel on the single-family that is gonna have a 15 front and five-foot side and rear yard that you can point to?
I would say, kinda in this eyebrow here.
Okay. And then, back to the 50-foot buffer, seems like the buffer requirement is, has been a, you know, is a necessity as you abut to other properties, so why, why should we approve a reduction by, to one-fifth of what's required?
And yeah, to my point, I guess we are working on that currently and providing physical and visual barrier to our neighbors to the due north and south. So there will be a revision that's coming across your desk here associated to those buffers.
Including the depth of the buffer or just how it looks?
Depth as well.
What do you project the HOA cost to be?
We haven't done 10-year budget. Certainly, a focus here is that outdoor and active and engaging amenity and the seven pocket parks that I talked through, which really just require landscaping as opposed to having someone who needs to sit in a clubhouse or have any fitness gear. I would say $75 a month to $100 a month for the HOA at this point, but I need to run a 10-year budget and come back with.
But you built other developments, you guys have.
Right, in fact, we're in the 75 range typically, but I think just with the amount of amenities, closer 75 to 100.
Any further discussion?
Cypress Run.
Yes.
You said it's a private road, correct?
Correct.
But you haven't finalized the transfer to what you need.
We're working on it right now. We now own half of Cypress Run Drive and are working on making sure that that is a, you know, our sole ownership and turn it over to the town as a public road once approved.
My only other comment would be is, I've been very vocal about sideline setbacks. And in Cypress Creek in the 55 and over section, we haven't allowed them to be closer, any closer than 18 feet, I think, 17 feet, something like that, total distance. I don't know who's got which closer lot line, but they have to be 17 feet. And then, one of the other developments, we got them further apart as well, was at Mallory Point. I can't remember, but there was another one that, that, I don't think putting houses 10 feet apart are appropriate anywhere in Smithfield.
Okay.
And so, five-feet sideline setbacks for your single-family homes are very tight. I don't know about townhomes and villas, I've gotta look at that, but your townhomes are tight in there with the sideline setbacks. But for single-family homes in Smithfield, 10 feet apart is not gonna be the right way to go here. So I need to make sure that there's enough of a buffer in between those that are, that's what's gonna separate them out.
Appreciate the feedback, we'll look at it.
I was gonna do this, that one as well.
Beat me to it?
You beat me to it on that one. The other one, I was just looking at the language on proffer number eight, which is on the roundabout and funding it. There seems to be some conflict in the timing of how you're gonna do the payment, and yet it's tied to occupancy certificates. And I don't know if the way that's worded, all the timing's gonna work out for the payment to be made when necessary or within the 90 days if you don't have OCs. So I just look at the language of.
Okay.
How and when that's gonna be proffered.
We'll look at that, thank you.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
I would like feedback from the commission. Looking at the commercial buildings, does anyone have any problems with those? Any issues, concerns?
I just.
The design of them?
I'm in line with Tom's thinking about not making them close to the road, having them set back more in line with what's already there.
But the appearance and design of the building?
We don't, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I would share the same concern that was raised about the style of the buildings. And I think if people really wanna open a business here, I think they'll, you know, they'll follow, do, make it fit into our town.
But like you were saying, Chipotle's gonna want Chipotle's building to look like Chipotle's building. And that's sort of what your comment was, is certain, certain businesses tie their architecture to their brand, and they will push back harder than others will with.
Yeah, well, then it might not be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, most time if you see it freestanding, but I've been into strip malls with a Chipotle just plugged in, so.
Yeah, and that's what I said, so some, some will work and some will fight, but.
I would like to see a space for local business to, to be open, but it doesn't look, that's maybe out of the price point for any of our local business folks, I'm not sure. It sure would be nice, though.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
I'll just point out with the 50-foot landscaped buffer for the planning commission waiver, the Tewiliger's house is approximately 330 feet from that side property line. The commuting conservation setback would only be 25 feet. So realistically, if the house was built to the setback with that additional 50-foot buffer, there would only be 75 feet in between, in between the spaces of the landscaped buffer and the setback. And the Tewiligers are 330 feet, their home away, just to give a little bit of perspective. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to see is the second spit, second, second special use permit broken out, commercial versus residential, and either make it a fourth special use permit or whatever. But I'd like to not tie commercial and residential together in the special use permit under one special use permit. If it could be separated from the commercial, from the residential, that would be better in my mind, looking at approving special use permits.
Yeah, definitely agree with that as well.
Meaning if I'm happy with the commercial side, we can approve that, you can move forward. If something like this is to transpire, but I don't wanna tie it to your residential if your residential's not gonna muster up.
Good point. Mr. Riddick, would that be something that could be handled under the single special use permit, where they could make a favorable recommendation for the commercial aspect, for instance, and then a negative recommendation regards to the residential?
No, you can't bifurcate a special use permit. You, I don't think, I think you'd, I mean, it makes sense to segregate them with respect to the residential and the commercial.
Meaning they could be standalones?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, it's so much easier just to say what you mean. So, if you're asking for, we're talking about setbacks, right?
Correct.
Well, then specify what the, if you want a special use permit for enhanced or different setbacks on commercial, say that's what you want. And then if you want them for the residential, say that's what you want. You can, I think that's what Dr. Pope is saying, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, for me, for commercial, you know, I think I'm gonna stick to the 40-foot front. Sides might be a little bit more, but I'm not going zero lot line on that right now unless there's a good reason for that. I don't know if I need to set a parameter for him because it ties his hand, but 40 feet from the front certainly is reasonable to stick with. Side, I might be flexible, but I'm a little inflexible on five feet on the single-family home dwellings. And so, I don't wanna deny a commercial based off of, I don't agree with single-family residential. I'd rather for them to split them, so if ultimately this comes through and we're making votes on this and this and that and this, we can pick it, well, we can at least allow some flexibility in what's approved and what's not approved. Because when we did the Grange, there were some that were approved and then some that were denied, because they were separated out. If you're leaving this under one, one, one special use permit, then it might, the whole use permit might get denied based on one component.
Right, and it'll hold up the whole project.
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and that of your colleagues. Our final item, ladies and gentlemen, is a public hearing. Excuse me. Text amendment, Article 13, Town Staff is the applicant. Ms. Claire, do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. If you remember, we recently updated our Chesapeake Bay preservation overlay. What we're doing is bringing our definitions that are located in Article 13 in line with what we approved for the Chesapeake Bay overlay definitions.
So it's just a house cleaning activity?
Yes, that is correct.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments on this item? Chairwoman, change a motion. Open the public hearing.
You have to open and close the public hearing.
Oh, hey, let's open the public hearing, want to? Do we have any sign-ups for public hearing? Seeing them, we will close the public hearing. There we go, I just wanna use the gavel again. That was fun for me, okay. Any comments from the planning commissioner on this item?
I don't think so.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we make a favorable recommendation to council.
Second.
Just put a motion in a second. Ms. Claire, recall for the vote, please. Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith? And Chairwoman Hilligus?
Yes, thank you.
We have no minutes to approve tonight?
No, we do not, they were quite long.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask for something to think about?
Of course you can.
I may be wrong on this, and it's just my opinion, but how many vape stores do we need? How many car washes do we need? So, I'm not opposed to car washes, I'm not opposed to having them, but it seems like they're popping up on every corner in every community, and we don't have any type of ordinance for a special use permit for car washes to my ability. But I just don't know, at least, just wanna make sure that next thing you know, we don't have 10 approved and there's nothing we can do about them. I don't know how you feel about them, but I don't have a problem with multiple car washes. I just don't know if we need six or seven in a town in Smithfield. I just wanna make sure we have an appropriate amount for the size of the town.
Yeah, isn't that what they're proposing at the South Church Street in bypass intersection, extending?
There seems to be several on the docket, but there's, I'm not saying we need to regulate it, I'm just saying they just seem like there are awfully a lot of them going around in the area, and they're not always the prettiest buildings to see.
So you're looking for a mechanism to limit?
I'm just saying, I'm just asking, does anybody feel differently or not? I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just saying there's a lot of them.
The good thing is, is they are all falling into entrance corridor. So we'll be able to take a look at what those buildings look like and sort of guide them and direct them and whatever. But I don't know, sometimes business demand is business demand, and if they think there's a market for it, it's not, not a by right use for the land, is it? I mean, if it's zoned for business, they can.
If it's permitted as a permit, if it's permitted, they can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
You can amend your ordinance and make it traditional.
Good. Just don't wanna look back and say, where did 10 come from?
That's what I was gonna say, if we wanted to do it beforehand.
Understood.
But if it's a, we still have.
One good thing is, we do have four fewer vape shops in town.
Well, for now. Ms. Smith was trying to make a point.
Well, I was gonna ask a question of, we know that the vape shops were raided yesterday, and temporarily, well, they're closed down.
Let's not talk about vape shops.
I, I, well, I want to.
I mean, just, but, I mean, if you can keep your comments very general, but because of circumstances, I would recommend we not talk about them a lot.
It's an ongoing investigation situation, it's not advised.
That's a big cop out from, that's what everybody says, but it's true.
It's not wrong, it's just because everybody says it.
It's not wrong, it's just probably, the less we say about it, like, man, would probably be a better thing.
And I wasn't putting speak about the.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just giving, I'm not trying to tell you not to say something, I'm just kinda giving you a general warning.
He's just giving you advice, that's what he's here for.
Okay, knowing that these, that normally vape shops are not standalone owned by the occupant, by the business, just like you were talking about, can we regulate how many car washes? Is there anything that can be, I don't have my, my thoughts already, so let me comment on that.
A vape shop requires a special use permit under any zoning ordinance.
They, they will in the future, they, in the past, they did not, but y'all changed yours anyway.
Yes.
And we can use the same mechanism for the car washes, yes?
I'm just saying, if you feel strongly, I just don't know how you feel. I'm just bringing it up as a, as a thought item for the future, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
But speaking of car washes, just once meeting, so there's a lot of comments.
Okay, anything else, ladies and gentlemen? We are adjourned, thank you for your time and attendance.
Is this thing, yeah?